All right, I would like to call this meeting to order, please. I would like to thank the commissioners for being willing to come and meet with council. Thank you for the public for attending. Just for information, this is a meeting that I asked for the commissioners and the councils to be able to have a conversation together about homelessness. We definitely, with the summer months coming, have seen a lot more visual of presence of homelessness. And I get a lot of phone calls like, hey, I've got, there's people on Sells Avenue. And then I have to say, okay, well, that's the county. I'm sure the county has similar things because we have a lot of borders in the urban Canyon City that make it confusing and difficult. And so there's a point where we need to kind of merge together. Canyon City does have the most homeless because we are the county seat and we are still a part of the county. And this is where DHS is, this is where Sylvista is. So we appreciate you being here to be part of that joint conversation. Cindy has taken our roll call. Because this is a workshop for the commissioners and the council, and I have some representatives from DHS. Our city staff representative is Chief Schick, and then I invited DeeDee from Loews &amp; Fishes as consultants to us. But we are not taking public comment today at this particular meeting. What we do encourage is that you take your notes, you write what you need, and prepare your comments for our June 2 workshop with the community, which will be one at 6 o'clock to discuss homeless. Oh, Sheriff, you need to come up, please. And Sunny, can you come? Can you join us too? Come join us too. Sorry. Please be a part. Anyways, June 2nd, 6 o'clock is homelessness solution brainstorming. And then 7:30 is about the tabled SOS ordinance. So commissioners, I do, before we get started, want to do some clarifications on a couple of things. We were able to watch the county commissioner meeting and we just want to make sure we have fact checks, we have some things that are open and about some of those reports. John, did you want to offer some of those fact checks? And I think between you, me, and Andrea, we each have something that we'd like to offer.
So I didn't have anything prepared.
Oh, okay.
But the, you know, we do have several different things that we have written or that, some things that I have written. Why don't you start and maybe Andrea, and I can fill in if there's other stuff.
The main was, there was a comment made from the public about the Las Cruces SOS camp that their homeless doubled since they opened. So I called the camp, they gave me, and I shared that PowerPoint with the commissioners and all the city council members to see what their numbers were indeed. And it showed, they had numbers more for the state of New Mexico, but have showed consistent, sometimes some years would rise a little bit, but consistent decrease in homelessness. Las Cruces in particular is one of the more successful communities in addressing homelessness. They did show that in 2021, that there was a dramatic increase in people who were housed. So I asked specifically, what was that dramatic increase about? And they said that for two things. One, they're one and only private emergency shelter closed for COVID. It's not affected numbers. But then they also used COVID money to just massively get people into housing. It wasn't just homeless people, but it was all kinds of people who were at risk. And so that was a skew of that. So I just wanted to just make a clarification on that. Andrea, you had a couple of clarifications too.
Yes. When I watched the, your public meeting, there were some comments that really I was concerned about, so I looked into. And during the time that SOS, which is the Safe Outdoor Spaces, since it's been, and that was, it began Labor Day of '21 until the present time, that there was a statement made that there were rapes and stabbings there. There was one stabbing of a man in his hand because he was trying to defend a young person who was there who had run away from home. And he was trying to defend her until the police got there, so he was stabbed in the hand. There were no recorded rapes, but if someone has other information or if it was recorded with the sheriff's department, that's possible, but not, it wasn't, there were none actually officially recorded. There have been none in that Safe Outdoor Space. And then someone had mentioned that Salida had only one homeless person. And two days ago, Salida Council passed an ordinance for their own sort of quasi camping in cars and campers. And they have a program they've set up in their Centennial Park, and that, they just voted on that two days ago. And these are the working poor. The people in this program have to work a minimum of 20 hours a week somewhere in the county, but they definitely have a program for people who are experiencing homelessness. And that's it. Thank you.
So let's go into the issues that we're facing currently with homelessness. And Chief, you can chime in if you want. At a recent meeting, one of our biggest challenges right now are we have some abandoned homes that we don't, we cannot find a living owner of that home. And so there's homeless squatting in that home chronically. Well, there's more than one. And going through that probate process of even though there's, we cannot determine who the living owner, if there is any owner, how we can do condemnations or evictions. That's why that has been one of our biggest challenges. Chief, what would you say that you have seen as far as challenges of homelessness recently?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, county commissioners. It's across the board. We have, we have garden variety criminal activity that occurs, but it is indeed sporadic. We average about 80 calls a year that result in criminal complaints. The rest are your quality of life nuisance issues, calls that we deal with. And in that, in that spirit, understanding, not indifferent to the challenges that our county neighbors have voiced, Sheriff Cooper and I have agreed to put in place an MOU to help remove some of those jurisdictional issues. Those challenges, those are the main challenges for us. Our officers and deputies get in those unfamiliar waters where it's truly ambiguous. Is it city? Is it county? And it's a bad combination for an officer or deputy to try and enact, take legal action and not even know where they stand in terms of jurisdiction. So that is certainly, I would think that would be our greatest challenge at this point. And I think we've, I think we're crossing that bridge. And I have a document here that city attorneys put together waiting on, waiting on an attachment to identify the jurisdictional authority that the sheriff's willing to grant to the city to help work towards this issue collaboratively. And as soon as I get that back from the city attorney, I'm going to forward it to the sheriff to be, for his consideration. So those are, that would be our greatest challenge.
Sheriff, do you, what do you see as your greatest challenges with homelessness currently?
Madam Mayor, the challenges that we face in the county are almost a mirror of what the city faces. Most of the time, the deputies, because of the environment they operate in, understand the jurisdictional boundaries. The difficult part for my staff is dealing with those quality of life issues because for the most part, they're noncriminal.
And could you, between the two of you, tell us a little bit more about what a quality of life issue is and, you know, just a list of examples?
Trash, trespass, when people cross the fences and then no one witnesses that. Those are the most frequent complaints that I get.
And Madam Mayor, if I could?
Mm-hmm.
The, I'd just like to explain a little bit. One of the things that happens when you call for service, either the sheriff or the Canyon City Police Department, that goes into our 911 center. The 911 center has spent a lot of time making sure that we have accurate maps about, that draw the jurisdictional boundaries between the county and the city. There's additional, there's additional complications there because we have fire districts and ambulance districts. But the basic message there is, is that if you call 911 from a residence, the jurisdiction is clear in that case, in almost every instance. But if you call 911 from a field or along a road without reference to an address, it is not clear, and then you're into the middle of jurisdictional issues, which hopefully this memorandum of understanding can help alleviate.
Mayor Protim, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we were studying the jurisdictional maps yesterday, trying to isolate those areas and try to identify those areas that we may share, that auto aid, if you will. And we literally have properties and parcels in the city that are completely surrounded 360 degrees by the county. When you're an officer trying to determine whether or not you're in city or county in those waters is troubling. And I can see where officers and deputies might be reluctant to take action.
Thank you.
Commissioners, and Sunny, would you like to offer any of the challenges that you're facing on the county side?
I just kind of have a question for the chief. Actually, I had, I talked with the sheriff about this yesterday. A lot of the complaints that we heard from the citizens were that you won't show up and do anything when they do call.
That's your question to me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, honestly, I can't respond to that. I, that's, I would encourage anybody who feels that they face that to give us a call because we'll investigate every complaint that a citizen makes, whether they live in the city or the county. If they call us and we don't respond, we better have a really good reason why.
Okay. And I think that MOU will help some of that as well because if they do respond and say, well, it's in the county, and then they obviously don't do anything probably, I'm guessing, but I think that'll help that. I think, Ashley, to answer your question, we get calls all the time of people, not all the time, I shouldn't say, but sometimes it's people within the city that call us, sometimes it's people in the county. We either turn it over to the sheriff's department or code enforcement, depending on the situation. It's kind of different of what you guys deal with, but I think the more of the topic that we're going to get to here in a little bit is your proposed ordinance. And I think that's what's driving most of these individuals to be here. I think that's worth a discussion more than where we're headed right now.
Okay. Well, the original, I think this is important though because the original complaints we're getting is, I'm getting complaints of encampments or people parked on county and, and we needing to have that mutual aid of whether it's city or county, that there's something consistent happening where I can say, I can direct it to, you know, if there's people in Sells or at the Riverwalk, that we can direct it to the right place and have a consistency. Because when we say, originally when we'd say, we patrol our, we patrol our Riverwalk. We patrol it. But it's only like from First to, what is the other side, Chief, that we could go? That's like First to Ninth or something?
Yes, ma'am.
First to Ninth Street, that's the only part of Riverwalk, that's city. But people are very upset about feeling safe on the Riverwalk, very upset about feeling safe on the Riverwalk.
I understand you guys have had conversations about that as well. Is that correct?
We did, yes, sir.
And the rest of the Riverwalk?
And we have recently acquired four mountain bike officers certified, and we're going to try and put them out on the Riverwalk as frequently as I can, as we can, in an overtime capacity, obviously, because they each work independent shifts. And industry standard is the mountain bike officers have to deploy in twos. We don't, we don't deploy them as a single officer. So in that light, we're going to try and work the front half of the week and the back half of the week at least twice a month. And the sheriff graciously offered to extend that jurisdictional authority to us all the way through the Riverwalk and talked about some funding.
Well, and I think that's part of that key of being together is, you know, if we're going to have our officers patrolling all of the Riverwalk, that there needs, the hope is that there would be some funding to help pay for our officers to do that so that the entirety of the Riverwalk has patrols. And we need to clarify that in the beginning, the patrols, it's not like every day.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I have four officers being able to deploy them twice a month, probably the front half of the week, probably Monday, Tuesday, and then a Friday, Saturday towards the back end of the week. They won't be out there every day.
Yeah. So it's a start?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's consistent, same officers patrolling frequently?
Well, I think it's, it is. It is a start, and it is at least a consistent pursuit where we start to identify those trouble areas on the Riverwalk and we can, we can work collectively together to resolve them.
I just wanted to thank the sheriff for coming to the table and hoping to be part of that solution. Do you have anything you want to offer?
I can tell you that there is no easy answer for this. I mean, we're very good at what we do as far as dealing with the criminality part of it. I know that occasionally I'll field a phone call and it's actually a city issue, but I will attempt to, you know, advise those people and address that issue with them so they know what the proper process is later on.
Thank you. So I guess that just circles back to, hopefully that collaboration will continue so that we can help get funding for those officers to patrol the entirety of the Riverwalk. I think that'd go a long ways to helping our public and for the safety. Before we move on to the SOS ordinance, I would like, I would like to hear a little bit from your guest that you brought, and that's the director of DHS, Tony Caroche, and then DeeDee too, to talk a little bit about the state of homelessness in your departments and where you're working. And then we'll, hopefully that'll segue into the SOS situation.
Well, good afternoon. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Tony Caroche. I'm the director of DHS. I've been the director since August of 2021. So this is kind of fairly new to me. I came from a corrections background for 36 years. And from my perspective, when I first was hired in May of 2020, we didn't have the SOS. So we had, we had encampments all behind, on county property back there, all behind along the, I don't know what you call that, the river, is it a river, creek?
Irrigation ditch.
Irrigation ditch. And so I know DeeDee and Stacy Quiddick, who was my predecessor, worked very closely together to implement the SOS. We had a lot of problems back there. We had a lot of fights. We did have a stabbing. We had two deaths. We found needles constantly in our supervised parenting playground area. We had a number of homeless that were camping out in our smoker, our smoker building, that's connected to the building. They were covering the table with like a blanket, and then they would start a fire. And, you know, I was afraid they were going to burn the building down, obviously. So we, I talked to the commissioners and county manager, and they helped implement some safety features for our staff because our staff were nervous to walk around the building. They were afraid to leave at night in the dark. So the commissioners graciously put a fence up to separate the property, which stopped all the foot traffic from the SOS camp into county property where all the vehicles are parked and the judicial building and our staff. I put an expanded metal fencing around our smoker area and locked it so that people couldn't get in there in the evenings and on the weekends. So, you know, so, so those are some of the challenges, obviously, right? And I think they're the same challenges we have all over the city and the county. I don't think it's anything unique to us. We have seen an uptick in homeless that have applied for SNAP and benefits through DHS. They give a general delivery address, which I'm assuming means a post office box. I don't really know how much of an increase we've had there, though. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Do you know how many of those, is there any way to document how many of those, how long they have, of residents that they have been living in Fremont County versus brand new to town?
I haven't looked at it, but I can surely look and see if we can find that.
Thank you.
So it's just, those are the challenges we have on the property. Obviously, with no SOS camp back there, we, our challenges have been mitigated at this point, so.
DeeDee?
My name is DeeDee Clement. I'm the executive director for Loews &amp; Fishes. And so to what Tony was saying, we actually started the SOS because of the, what was happening at the DHS property. The campers were going back there in their parking lot, and the decision was made, the commissioners had said that we needed to, to remove those folks because of the challenges that was happening there. And so it was that point that we established the SOS site on Labor Day weekend where we told the folks that were on the parking lot in DHS that they had a choice. They could come to the SOS site or they could go somewhere else, but they couldn't remain where they were at. And in most cases, I think most of the folks went to the SOS site initially. I think there were maybe one or two families that decided to move somewhere else. There were a total of 26 people that stayed at the SOS site. There were, out of those 26 people, there were 15 that actually transitioned into housing in that six-month period. There was, I know that you mentioned there were the two deaths. There was actually one death that happened in the parking lot of DHS before the SOS site. And then there was a death that happened towards the latter part when we were getting ready to close down the SOS site in April. So when you look at the statistics as far as 50% getting transitioned into housing, the 26 that stayed there, some of them were, some of the, maybe some of the most challenging people experiencing homelessness in our community. Some of them were ones that law enforcement maybe would have regular contact with if they were elsewhere. And so the fact that 15 of them got housing was, was good. We would say that the numbers have gone down. I think in the summer, we always see more people experiencing homelessness just because they're out and about more. But we are, we track this. We've been tracking this now for three years, and our data is good. We don't falsify our data. It doesn't, doesn't do us any good to falsify our data. And so we are aware of, as the end of April, there was 147 individuals that were experiencing homelessness. And, and in January, as I think we've mentioned this before, in January of 2020, we were as high as 396. So almost a, or is a 50% reduction in homelessness. Do we still have a ways to go? Absolutely. But I believe that we are making progress.
Right? There still is almost 200 people that are homeless. And so there is a problem, and it is.
Absolutely.
There are nuisances, and then that's why we're here today. For commissioners, I just wanted to point out some of the things that the city has been doing to address homelessness. Just, so just from some comments that were made at the commissioners meeting, just want to make sure that there's clarification, like, we do not allow people to camp on our public rights of way in our sidewalks and in our parks. We actually have made ordinances where that is against the law. No camping in our parks. No even standing, sitting, or laying down on sidewalks and public's rights of way. And that's actually, it's really helped a lot. We did have lots of big problems downtown on our park benches and our alleyways. Macon Plaza was a really big hotspot. Veterans Park, as you know, was a super big hotspot in parts of the Riverwalk. Those ordinances really helped a lot to clean that up. Of course, Macon Plaza, another one of their strategies was to always have activities happening there, so there's always hustle and bustle and lots of people. So it just wasn't as convenient of a place. And we also shut down our electricity so that the general public does not have access to electricity at any of these locations. And we talked about our park patrols, our co-responder program, the rights of ways, prohibiting camping on city-owned property. We have our code enforcement that is now under the police department, so there's more teeth for our code enforcement. We are engaged in civil actions for our abandoned homes and our campgrounds. So we also had problems probably about four or so years ago that you can camp in a campground for two weeks and you have to leave. But we'd get these encampments that would be there for two weeks, and they wouldn't leave. They'd be gone for a day, and then they'd come back. We have improved the Royal Gorge Campground considerably, beautiful enhancements, and now charge a nominal fee to be there and have a campground host. That has totally eradicated homeless encampments at that mountain park. We do, are seeing some homeless encampments at Red Canyon and Tupper Canyon Park, and not just in the park, but also in the outlaws outside of our jurisdiction, like, because our park only goes so far. So they just know just right where to go, just outside. And so there's some continued problems with that. We also started locking our public restrooms overnight to discourage unwanted overnight guests in our public restrooms. And so we definitely have had a lot of, I guess you could say, enforcement that we have done on our part. But with that came some concern from our attorneys, especially if we do evictions off of the Riverwalk or evictions off of other places with court jurisdictions, saying that if we evict somebody, that there needs to be a place for them to legally go.
I got a response for that. Have you, I know you took your attorney's advice on that. That applies to the Ninth District Circuit Court, which is not Colorado. It does not apply in the Tenth. There is currently no law in Colorado that says that. I have a letter from the governor's office that says that, a response from the governor's office, plus all the research on the circuit courts.
Excuse me, that says what? The letter from the governor says what?
There is currently no law in Colorado. Let me read it to you. The question was asked, can't find her question, but the answer is, I hope, at this time, there is no law dictating that a city or town provided, providing these beds. The city or town decides how they will help their homeless population. There's also a statewide organization, and it goes into some information like that, but there is no law in Colorado that says that you have to find them a place if you move them off of a public place.
That is, that is correct. There is no law. But there is, there is, we do have the district, the, leave it to, Circuit Court ruling.
The Ninth Circuit, John? That is not Colorado.
But, but the issue is, that was reviewed for certiori in front of the Supreme Court.
And they denied it, right?
Which means it is the law of the land.
For the Ninth Circuit Court.
And, and.
This jurisdiction, which does not include Colorado.
The, but the point is, is that you don't have to have a law saying that, that, that you don't have to have a ruling that there's a law that says you can't do that. What we have is what is law in the Ninth Circuit. That is, you know, and we can assume, it is assumed, that the Supreme Court would do similar rulings in similar cases. And so even though it may not be totally applicable nationwide, the likelihood that the city would lose a case such as what before the Supreme Court is high. And so that's the issue.
John, it never went before the Supreme Court. They refused to hear it.
That's correct. That is, that is before the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
That is before the Supreme Court.
But I think you're telling all of us that there is a law in place here, and there's not.
No, 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 I did not say that.
Ashley just said it.
No, I said there's, there.
There is a law that if we move them off of a space, we have to have a space for them to go.
Well, excuse me if I said that there's a law that's misspoke, and it was through the courts, that there's a vulnerability for us for evictions.
Do I think, I think, first of all, I think the, the. Do I think, I think, first of all, I think the, the, the way we say stuff needs to be correct if we're going to say it, because that's what we're all listening to.
My mayor, and I stand corrected on that word.
Yeah.
I, John, I, I understand you and council, the mayor and the council, taking the advice, and you know, your legal counsel, that's what they're there for. I'm still trying to understand what you're saying our obligation is under the Ninth Circuit ruling when it doesn't apply to the Tenth. When, when the Supreme Court declines to hear it, that does not make it the law of the land. It, it does not spread to the other circuits automatically. If, if the policy that you are implementing for the city is providing these spaces out of the, what you think is the likelihood of losing a case, then if, if that's, if that's what you're saying, then, then I guess maybe just confirm that. But to say that we have to follow what the Ninth Circuit said, I think is incorrect.
And I agree with that. And, and yes, that is, that is what we're saying. You know, what we, one of the things that we've done is we've passed a law about no camping within our city parks, okay? And we don't want to see that challenged in the court, okay? It may be challenged. If it, if it were challenged, we want to have the best legs we can stand on to withstand that challenge. And so, that is, that is a part of the thing, at least on my part. I won't speak for council.
Well, I think for our attorneys, that's like, their job is to keep our codes that we do have, or ordinances I do have, to be sound, and that we are protected from any, any vulnerabilities or liabilities.
So, I think in the Ninth Circuit Court decision, and, and I appreciate your ordinance for the public parks, because that's where people play and recreate. But in there, this, it states, the Ninth Circuit Court, that you cannot criminalize being homeless, okay?
Correct.
So, you can't do that. But you guys now have these ordinances in place, which does make it criminalized. So, that's where the Ninth Circuit Court came into it.
It's not criminalized as long as we have a place for them to go that's legal.
With the Ninth Circuit, not in the Tenth Circuit, though.
Well, yeah.
But them just sleeping on the sidewalk is not, there's nothing wrong with that, according to the Ninth Circuit, the panel of Ninth Circuit that held this hearing.
So, Dwayne, I can't really do an attorney analysis, because I actually did ask if our attorney could be here to give us legal advice today. And was, he was uninvited by the commissioners to be here for that, but I could.
He was not uninvited.
Yeah.
But I, okay, with that being said, I think the proper terminology ought to be used.
But, but we are very happy to have him give some more legal clarification for all of us, absolutely.
I think the proper terminology ought to be used, and, because there is no law in Colorado that says that that's illegal.
It's been established.
And so, yeah, so you need to, you're basing it off of a district, different district court, and that's what you're going off of. Okay.
So, so I think we've wrapped around that. We can ask for further clarification one way or another. I think that for our city standards, we're protecting ourselves from vulnerabilities. As far as for SOS, it was, that was an opportunity that we saw that there was already camping happening at this location. Perhaps let's do an experiment. Let's see if we can make this better. If this could be a potential solution. Took that spot that was on city property already and created lots of rules to go around it. It doesn't mean it was perfect. There were definitely a lot of problems, but lots of rules and enforcement to go around it to see, does this help? Is there some value in pursuing this more? The location was chosen merely because there was already people there. There were a lot of people that were invited to leave. Also want to just clarify too, and lots of comments that were made about the choice of that location. Besides that, it was just already there, and there was issues there. But I mean, it was decades ago that, I'm not sure who else was a part of it, but I know that the former police chief Stefanik, that, that vision, that there was a master plan for Justice Center Road to be a place for services. You go to Justice Center Road, that's where the sheriff's office is. That's where the PD is. That's where Silvista is. That's where DHS is. That's where all of these different services are, all family crisis services. They're all there on this campus. And so, there was an additional value of, there needs to be oversight as much as we can over this. And that location for that was important. That PD was right across the street. Sheriff was right across the street. Loews and Fishes was right across the street. Silvista was right across the street, so that there could be a lot of management and oversight and eyes on that. Whether, at the time, we can let police chief, if you want to say, there was, felt like there was some merit. Instead of having stabbings on the Riverwalk, or having our police officers going from Mountain View to Temple Canyon to this park along the Riverwalk, all these little nooks and crannies all over town. At least some, there was a group, and that, there's only what, maybe seven to nine at a time total. At least they could go check on all those seven to nine every single day in one spot. And so, for your officers, that was a huge help. Do you want to?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, it, it certainly reduced, the calls for service that we were getting in was certainly reduced the activity in Macon Plaza and, and Vets Park and Depot Park. Of course, we still get calls in those areas, you know, City Plaza and those, those areas, Loaf and Jugs at Ninth. You know, those are still, you talk about some of our hotspots. But I can't say definitively that the SOS camp was the direct correlation to those reduced calls of services in those areas. But I, I can't say that it wasn't. It existed when that transition occurred. I think we're also neglecting to point out, and we don't have folks from Silvista here, there were a number of success, success stories with people who had drug addictions and things of that nature. So, I think there's all kinds of indicators that there, that the data supports that the camp served a purpose. It was a reduction in calls for service in those, in certain areas, and we, we've already heard data from DeeDee on the transition to homes. Silvista certainly had plenty to offer. The last time we had a meeting here about this, talking about those individuals that they reached and, and got into recovery. So, you know, I'm a believer in data, and I, I think the numbers are there. So, again, I can't say the direct correlation is SOS reduced our, our quality of life crime calls and, and police services, but they went down during those times.
I think this is kind of getting at the heart of what a lot of the folks are here about with the SOS there. If it reduced calls in certain areas, and, and the statistics are reflected in, in reduced calls in other areas because people moved to the SOS. We, we certainly have, at the very least, anecdotal evidence from all the surrounding neighbors that are in the county in the SOS area, that it, problems increased out there. The problems didn't go away. They moved. And having SOS out there brought about other problems for neighbors all to the east and south of the Justice Center area on those interface areas between city and county. And so, a lot of the, the worry here is making it more available. I don't know what the plans are for a future SOS, if it's, if it's a different kind of facility, if it's a non- tent city kind of facility, or if it's something else, or where it goes to. We'd just be moving the problem from that last location to the next location. Or if it's in the same area, just further encouraging homelessness, not solving it, but encouraging it. And so, I think there's a great trepidation over what's, what's being proposed, I guess, by council and what the intent is. Because we've had the discussion multiple times, at least internally, and about the location out there in Justice Center and the history there, and the services that are provided, seems like a logical location. But we are victims of our own efficiency. Our DHS folks do a great job, and they're renowned throughout the state for how good the, good a work they do in getting services to people. That being said, the word gets around to those that receive services as well. And so, they come to Canyon City and the work that DeeDee does. That word gets around. And what are we actually going to do to slow down the influx of homeless instead of encouraging more of them to come? Because this is, this is kind of where we're at, and folks in the interface areas that are in the county. We're, this is where we're experiencing the, the growth of the problems, the, the trash, the needles, the, the human waste that is in the ditches, under bridges, in fields. We're seeing increase in theft of personal property off of these properties. So, it's, the problem, it's, it's great that it, it, it went down in some areas, I guess, back to my original point, but it, it didn't go away. It just moved.
And Mr. Commissioner, we weren't, I was not indifferent to that.
Yeah.
Which is why I approached the sheriff. I think we're certainly a huge stakeholder at this table, and we owe that to our county neighbors to work collectively with the sheriff's office to try and resolve those issues that you're referring to.
So, that, that's kind of where the spirit of the conversation of, okay, we heard, you know, when the, the people spoke at city council, definitely heard some deficiencies.
Yeah.
So, let's figure out how we can fix those deficiencies. And I think that was a huge leap forward. I think it's also important to note that some of the lessons learned is if an organ, if, if an SOS were ever to happen, according to this ordinance, an organization would have to come to the city and get a permit and say, these are all of the things that we're going to do to make this happen and be successful. And so, there aren't needles everywhere, and there aren't human feces, and that the neighbors, there's neighbor mitigation. And one of, some of those things were as well, that there needs to be fencing around it, and there needs to be video surveillance cameras, and there needs to be, you know, a manager on site. That little spot that we did our experiment on, that's not conducive to that. It's, it's technically a city road. You cannot put a fence around that. And so, that's not going to be an option moving forward in the future. But, and we have had churches in the past that have wanted to, in the, in the winter months, have a place for the homeless to stay when Loews and Fishes is full. We can't do that unless we have an ordinance that they go through that permitting process to say, you are going to take care of all of these things because we don't want to create problem, more problems. Do you want to add anything to that, DeeDee?
I, I would just say that, as we, as you said, Madam Mayor, was this ordinance just allows an opportunity for someone to have an SOS. There, as of right now, there isn't an agency who has stepped up and said, I want to do an SOS. There hasn't been any property that's been identified where an SOS is going to go. It just gives us, if in the future, we see that we need to provide more space available or a safe place for people to stay, it just allows our community to, to do that.
Commissioners, would you, or council members, anything that you would like to add to our discussion on homelessness?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much for your time today, and thank you so much to the public for, for coming to listen and to the commissioners. I guess I, I also am very, very interested in, in the data and what the data has to show us. And one of the things that I would love to really fully understand is if, if essentially, there was a slight movement, but the general location was the same, what the quality of life calls looked like for the time period prior to September 2021 and the time period after. So, if we're able to better understand, was there a positive improvement from, from enforcing all of those rules and from having all of those rules in that location or not? So, that's one thing that I would really like to understand. And I think I also understand that there is a pretty significant uptick during the summer months of, of persons experiencing homelessness. So, I think honestly, what I'd like to know is the September 2020 to April 2021, and compare that to the September 2021 to April 2022, to really try as best as we can to be comparing apples to apples. Did the, did having the SOS and those rules and regulations actually improve things? Or did it actually make things worse with regard to the impact on those individuals whose private property neighbors, the general area of the SOS? So, that's one thing that I, if we have that data, or if, if we need some time to get it, I would certainly be very interested in, in knowing that. I have one more after that.
Okay, I'll answer, try to answer your question as best as I can. We identified, there we go. We've identified three basic areas around Justice Center where we have consistent problems. And based on the calls that I monitor, they didn't seem to increase or decrease. It stayed about the same. So, probably the largest area is Four Mile Creek and the bridge under Highway 50 and that corner of Mr. Cohen's property. And then, there's foot traffic that goes from there over all the way behind Mr. Short's property. And so, that's where we run into flattening down the fences, some minor thefts, things like that. The second was along the irrigation canal that's on the east side of Justice Center Road. And that got pretty heated last year in between the manager there at Journey Home and some individuals that were camping and Mr. Cohen. And I believe he was actually cited in that instance because his behavior did cross the line. So, the third area is along Grandview, and that's mostly just the foot traffic up and down Grandview. But I can tell you, there are individuals that will leave wherever they're camping on Justice Center, and they travel as far south and west as Rouse Park.
I want to add to that a little bit if I can. There's, there's a report from DHS, and it is just from September 21 to April 28. But I, I can't answer how it was before that. But the safety concerns and stuff that were noted, I know there were successful, some people were successful in getting out of there and getting homes, and that's great. I, I assume that those weren't, were probably also not the people that are causing trouble on the neighboring properties, but that's an assumption. So, but there are always people there that shouldn't have been there. And I know this one wasn't, didn't have security like a potential one would have. There was always known drug dealers going in and out of there. There were needles everywhere. There were clients unstable behavior, sexual misconduct, human trafficking concerns. There were, they, they weren't following the rules that they agreed to when they went into there, drug use, not keeping their stuff in place, dogs on leash, or animals on leash. There was a lot of the folks that did not take advantage of the services that were offered. They wouldn't walk over and get a meal, and they wouldn't go to their appointments. They, this was from DHS Anna, right? She ended up, this is her words, "I ended up policing the area more than providing services, telling campers to pick up their trash, kicking people off the property that weren't supposed to be there." It just goes on and on and on. The tents weren't that great. Thanks to Mr. Cohen, we have a great picture of the trash that's there. I mean, so this is the way it looked with those, with the SOS there. So, it, it wasn't all, all great either. I mean, I know there are success stories out of there. It sounds like there was, which is great. But did, did this cause their success, or, or would they have had success otherwise? But I, I don't think those are the people that are getting off on other people's property either, but.
So, can you provide us a copy of that DHS report?
Sure.
I'll say that as far as like the trash goes, we, before we really started, I mean, I guess maybe before Built for Zero really started getting aggressive and united, you know, gathering a lot of these organizations to get together to solve homelessness that decreased it by 50%. We were cleaning it, we were using tractors to clean up homeless in Cat Miss on the Riverwalk. I mean, it was horrible. It's not, it, I was, I would definitely say it's not, it was still happening, but not as much. I mean, we, we pay for that stuff all the time as, as a public entity. But the information is important to have. Like I said, it was an experiment as a pilot, had a lot of lessons to learn. And if something were to happen again, we wanted to make sure that it's set up so that those kinds of things are alleviated. Do you have anything that you want to add to that?
I, I would agree with what Anna had written there. There were a lot of challenges and if I gave the impression that everything was wonderful over there, then, then I gave an untrue impression. There were lots of challenges. As far as the, but I would say that we, we learned a lot of lessons and so when we crafted or the idea of crafting the SOS ordinance, we included the lessons learned. And so going forward, we would be using those lessons learned so those things could not happen. We know that oversight is, is, you absolutely have to have an onsite manager, someone who's over there regularly. We didn't have that and so that's why a lot of those things were allowed to happen or did happen, I should say. As far as the comment about the people that got housing, would they be folks that maybe were vandalizing some of the property around that area? I don't know that, but I, I do know that many of the people that stayed there were longtime homeless in our community and they probably had lots of contact with law enforcement over the, over their time being homeless. And so can't say that they were the ones or could have been ones that maybe would vandalize, but they definitely had police contact in their life prior to coming to the SOS. And I'm not going to say that they didn't have police contact after they came to the SOS. The Sheriff's Department and the Canyon City Police Department were very helpful in helping us manage that area.
Um, and, and also that there were some folks that they, they lived out under the stars for most of, you know, for a huge part of their life and they were not going to go inside the Los and Fishes Emergency Shelter. They were not gonna do that. But they were persuaded to go live in a tent. And those are the ones that finally they built up those trusting relationships and were able to get the help to finally be able to live in a four-walled home. And so those, I mean, luckily there are those success stories and I think it's important to, you know, to remember those. And that there are, there is still that bad side that we see and we recognize that. And since our last city council meeting, we found there's still a lot more lessons that we need to learn and acknowledge and take into account if this ordinance were to move forward. This is important information that we've received from you and we really appreciate it. That we need to be cognizant and be good neighbors and make sound decisions that are helpful and don't cause more problems to our community. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I have one more, more, one more data question.
Sure.
And thank you so much Sheriff Cooper for, for explaining and providing the information that you did have about not really increasing or decreasing. I think the one other question that I've really had and a lot of it's come from the public comments about, are the, are these people, people who have been in Fremont County for a while? Are there people who are drawn here from the services? And I know based on your data that it looks like the question that you ask is whether or not they've been here for at least a year. I don't know if you have more detailed or disaggregated data of if they've been, and I know that there isn't really a cutoff of you're from Fremont County, if you've been here for five years or for 10 years or what have you. But I guess I'm wondering if you have the information about how long they've been here. Cause I do, I do understand that there is a little bit of a difference of if somebody's coming here seeking services and then we're providing more services and then that's drawing more people here. Or if there are people who have been here for, you know, three or four or five or six years and, you know, they have challenges and they are looking for services. So I'm just wondering if in your individualized interviews, if you have that level of data or not.
So that's not necessarily, the question that we ask, have you lived in our community a year or longer and it's just a yes or no? And so that's where that comes from. But there probably is a way that, maybe not for everyone that is on our by-name list, those 147 individuals, that we could find that data, but there is another database that's, we use, it's called a Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. And what we could do is we could actually potentially punch in or, or Google, not Google, but put in their names and that and it would show if they've ever stayed in an emergency shelter or any services that they've received in the state of Colorado. So we could actually potentially track someone if they've moved through the state of Colorado. I can't provide you that answer today, but definitely could go back and we could do that search on the people on our by-name list and, and report back to the city council on what we find.
Thank you. If that wouldn't be too, I don't know how time intensive that is, but if it's not too much of a burden, I think that's something that would be very interesting to know.
Yep, thank you.
I can tell you the last homeless coalition minutes say that out of the 28 new people in town, six did not live here for a year or longer. That was as of 5/19.
Right, that is correct. Yep, yep. And I know that when the outreach has gone out, what they've discovered is there are actually people who have been in Colorado and they've moved to another state. And I know that they ran across a couple that maybe have lived, let's just say Louisiana for a few years. And then for whatever reason, they came back to the Fremont County. And so they would be some of the new people that were identified, even though they were originally from Fremont County. They had left for a period of time and they've come back. But there are also those that have come from other communities that have come to Fremont County.
And I think as far as data, Tony, if you can also provide that data from people who are seeking new services from you and how long they've lived in Fremont County would be really helpful to know too. Is there anything else that you'd like us to know? Oh, sorry, council member Tracy, this is a more casual conversation. Pipe in whenever you want.
Oh, okay. Thanks. I, a lot of things running through my mind. You know, I think it's important to note that, just in general, that people in our country have the right to come and go. I think I've said that before, that, you know, it's, we need to be careful that we don't assume that there's something wrong with people deciding to come here for whatever reason. A lot of us came here for a variety of reasons. I came in the seventies. A lot of folks came here much more recently than that. But we, I don't want to get into a situation where we're trying to judge that, who gets to come here and who doesn't. And, and I guess my other, and maybe we'll talk more about the ordinance specifics, but I, I'm trying to get a picture of what the city and county might be able to share in terms of a joint vision of what we want to have happen. I, I really am cringing a little bit at the feeling sometimes that it's city versus county, county versus city, when it's not and it shouldn't be. We're all together in this, it's a community issue. And so I, if the county folks have more to say about, you know, what you want to aim for, what does the county see as a goal to aim for? What role does the county want to play? What would be success in the eyes of county commissioners? I, I don't know how else to word that, but I, I, I think it's important to point out that this proposed ordinance is a land use ordinance. We're required to make these adjustments to our zoning code if we want to allow any kind of temporary shelter in the future. And it is temporary. The language in the current ordinance would not allow for year-round use in these different zoning districts. It's up to six months, I think, is the current wording. So I think it's important to point that out and, and just along the lines too of wanting to correct the record, so to speak, on some things. There's never been a proposal for a tent city. And that phrase has been thrown around at multiple meetings in multiple ways and I, I just, I saw what the SOS looked like in February. It was not a tent city. It was a very small footprint and I don't even know, I don't remember how many tents there were, but fewer than a dozen and not all of them were occupied. So I just want us to be careful about, you know, what we're referring to. But I really am curious to hear more from the county about what you would like to see happen, not necessarily what you want the city to do, but what we as a community can do better on this issue.
I'll start. So I think the reason we're here, how many people here live in the county? And how many are in the city? Okay, so that's why we're here. The, the potential actions or what's been taken by these folks that the city was gonna do was create a tent city. Your ordinance states-
No tent city, no tent city.
No, I know, but your ordinance states tents must be placed. I mean, it has in the word.
That's not a tent city. If we're gonna be accurate in our language, please.
What do you think these people thought when they heard this? Some of them came to us and I'm glad they came and talked to us. I appreciate that. But I also was told that a lot of them didn't know about you, you all's meeting for this, for the second reading, I think that was, until a couple hours before. So the word got out there wrong, obviously, because you're not proposing a tent city. But that's what they understood and that's what they heard is what I'm seeing. So I've got emails from Ashley that says they have no intentions whatsoever for a tent city in no form whatsoever. Unfortunately, there's a lot of outrageous untruths out there. But it says it right here in this ordinance tense. So if they got ahold of this, it shows it. It also has the other particulars in there about how it has to be an organization, it has to be policed, there has to be drinking water, everything that it takes to it. But it does open the door for tents to go somewhere within the city. So the majority of these folks live in the county, but they're affected because of what happens in the city. So that's their concern and I get it, I totally understand. I'm right there with them. I don't live in the city either. But it's gonna affect everybody. So this is the first meeting we have had together about this potential problem. Ashley, you told them at the last city council that we'd had several meetings. We haven't. We've had one, this is it.
There have been several stakeholder meetings with the SOS. No, when we had the SOS, we had a few stakeholder meetings. It was at the police department. The DHS was there. Law enforcement was there. We had all kinds of stakeholders there. I didn't specifically mention the county commissioners.
We, we weren't there. We were asked that question too, why we weren't there. I don't, I don't remember those meetings.
I don't remember if the invitation was specifically given to the commissioners or not. I don't remember.
So anyway, this is the first meeting we've, or first conversation we've had about this? Yeah, it's a community problem. It's a county problem. We have it out clear on the west end of the county. We have the same problem. We handle it different because we're on the location and we do it differently, but everybody, all of us are affected by this. So there needs to be a resolution. I don't know what it is. Obviously not many do because this is a nationwide problem, I think. I just returned from Alaska. There was as, as many homeless in downtown Anchorage as there is here. Who would want to be homeless in Anchorage? I mean, come on. But I think the conversation needs to go, but I think this ordinance just sets the precedent for tents to go somewhere.
So as a clarification, tent city is usually, here's a piece of land, go at it. That you do you at this place. SOS is clearly defined space. It's managed by a particular organization. There, in this instance, it would need to be fenced and have surveillance and management and agreements with organizations that they would come weekly to have, to interact with the residents and that the residents would have to commit to getting, taking those services and be in a progression plan. There are tons of rules and wraparounds that make, that this is not a free-for-all. This is you are only here and invited here at a specific number that can be adequately taken care of, which would not be very many, but seven to nine at one time at this particular location. I can't imagine they're ever being bigger because we just don't have the resources to manage anything larger than that or no organization does. So it's very finite in this tiny box of all of these fenced-in rules and regulations and commitments to get yourself out of the, out of homelessness, to have the ability to stay in that tiny square. It is, and if there were more, and to the point for a lot of those living in the county, he said, we don't, we, we just don't call, we don't call. Well, we don't know if there's a problem if you don't call. Now we know because they voiced it. So now we can have more information to arm us in making better decisions moving forward. And part of that is having these agreements with the sheriff for the Riverwalk and for Justice Center Road where there is no more that blur of what city or what's county. Together you guys can help do, have enforcement and take calls. It's wonderful. I'm glad. That's an amazing thing that's come out of this conversation, you know, these conversations.
Mayor, I would, one of the things that I've heard and I've talked about it with the commissioners is that in the community, we hear people make the comment, well, I'm not gonna call the sheriff or I'm not gonna call the police because they don't do anything. That statement is not accurate. We have never refused to call for service. We have never refused to take action. The main problem is, is that a lot of what we get calls for is non-criminal conduct. If a crime has been committed, my directives to my deputies is we have a zero tolerance policy. But some of the crimes that we can write are very, very difficult for law enforcement to identify. One of the hardest is littering. Someone actually has to see an individual place trash on the ground and walk away from it and be willing to testify in court. Most of the time what we get is we show up, we have no standing in this case. So we look at the complainant and say, you have to appear in court. And 75 to 80% of the time, the response is, no, I'm not gonna go to court. I don't have time.
Thank you for that clarification, Sheriff. And I think something that we've learned, there, there is a lot of misinformation. And, and I would also like to say that if, if there are things like vans of homeless being dropped off, that we need to have that information so we can follow up. And if that is indeed happening, I guarantee you, I'm gonna be calling the mayor of those communities and having some pretty strong discussions. But we've never been able to verify that actually happening. As much as we've probed and looked and checked back on, it has to be verified. Like you said, for you in law enforcement, it goes another, and even for the level of that, of what you can prosecute. So that, those are the, some of the handcuffs that we have that make it that much more difficult to deal with homelessness. And that's why we're trying to be creative to do the best we can to decrease it by 50% so far. I know Built for Zero has ambitious goals to decrease chronic homelessness because probably chronic is probably those worst case scenarios of people causing problems in the community. It's probably time to wrap.
Just real, real quick.
Yeah, I have one question that we haven't really addressed and, and this is just the beginning. But I'm really interested, commissioners, do you guys have a plan or some way that you want to deal with homelessness? Or homeless individuals that are causing problems with criminal activity in the county? Do you, is there some way that you guys have determined is the best way to deal with that? That's just, I was just wondering if you, you may have something already that we don't know about. Thank you.
Well, this is the same question essentially that council member Tracy asked. And so, and Commissioner McFaul mentioned a few things and, and there is, there is no solution. Otherwise this would have been solved a long time ago. But we also don't need to be creating more problems. And I think that's where, if, if we want to get a message across to the city council from the commissioners and from our own constituency is that, you know, there are certain things that may be done in the future with an SOS or a, a location. That is inevitably going to be located somewhere probably on the outskirts of city limits. It's not gonna be downtown. It probably won't be in one of the city parks. It, it's going to be in a place like Justice Center. It's going to be in a place that's an interface area that's gonna affect all of these folks out here. And so that directly concerns us. And, and it's a concern if we start talking about these SOSs and, and, and making it more convenient for folks to come and to Canyon City and to Fremont County and to camp in this area and receive services. We want to be obviously at the table, but, but also not just that, but to actually hear the concerns of, of the folks of the county that your actions affect them directly, not indirectly. It affects them directly. And we don't have a vote on that and they don't have a vote. And we don't have a vote on that and they don't have a vote on that. And so we need you to hear us, that if these things are, are to be set into motion, if the, if the ordinance is just a land use ordinance, it's still, it opens that door into the future for actions that we have no control over and things that affect each and every one of them directly. And a lot of the folks that aren't here in the room today that have been calling us and have been giving their concerns, the things that are already happening to them on their properties. I would, I would also ask that whatever we can do to facilitate our law enforcement to untether and unleash them to be able to enforce, that is the direction that we need to go. Coddling is, is not going to be the, the way to, to help discourage homelessness. It only encourages it. And I would also ask the folks in the audience that, take it to heart what the chief and the sheriff said, you know, we, we need those complaints called in. We, we need the paper record, we need, we need the record of what is going on and who's doing it. Please file the complaints. There are problems out there and it's not everybody. I think DeeDee can attest to that, you know, there are success stories, right? And there's good things that have happened, but it doesn't make the bad stuff just magically disappear that has happened to some of these residents. And so I would ask the council members to be very aware that this is directly affecting more than just city residents and, and maybe even more directly affecting county residents, meaning that it's happening a lot on the outskirts of town if we do an SOS.
So, and the message has been heard and received, absolutely. So council member Tracy and Senator both asked, what are your, what are your solutions for helping to address homelessness? One thing you mentioned Senator Grantham was enlacing law enforcement more. Can you maybe expound on that a little bit more or what other things are, because I mean, this room is full of county people. We are in the county, we, you know, what, what is your game plan or master plan?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, Madam Mayor. I mean, this is something that we're going to have to talk with the sheriff and the chief about, because, you know, some of their comments at the beginning of this and working together in the MOU, I think are a good step forward on that and making sure that we cover those interface areas where the, the enclave areas, I think you mentioned earlier, the, of city that are surrounded by county, you know, and, and the odd lines, all you have to do is look at that map over there and, and understand the difficulty that you guys have in, in enforcing along those areas between city and county, where it jags in and out, especially through the river corridor. And, you know, I think that's, that's the good start, where we need to have better communication between us and our law enforcement so that we can make sure that we're on the same page. And if there's things, and I don't know that there are things or there aren't things, that we need to untether them or unleash them, but if there are, I think we need to be on the same page and doing it in both entities.
Which is why I gave, I asked that we meet together and that was actually before the SOS situation happened, I asked that we could get together to get on the same page and appreciate that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Sunny Bryant, I'm the county manager. So just a couple of things that our departments do on a daily basis, it's why we actually have some of these positions in place. So obviously the sheriff's office through the law enforcement perspective, so they get out there, they interact, they deal with those situations as they come up. We do have three code enforcement officers in the county, so they go off over Fremont County, they address any concerns with people that are, you know, squatting somewhere illegally living in a tent or a camper or something. They go out, we've had some issues where, you know, there's somebody in, in some of the county-owned parks or something, they get out there, they help with that, try to address those issues. Our county-owned properties also have no overnight camping and so we've discouraged it from that perspective. The Department of Human Services, so they have divisions that are dedicated to helping those in need, to helping get food assistance, to helping, you know, individuals get resources, services, you know, any type of insurance, all of that. They recently have worked and partnered with Solvista, so DHS actually applied for a grant to help build the new treatment facility up in Salida and so Fremont County has played a, a role in that piece to, because we all know a lot of these citizens have some sort of substance abuse, so just getting a local resource, so we're not having to transport people out of the, out of the county. And so a lot of the things that, you know, we're just doing on a normal basis are not, you know, not just coming out of these discussions, but it is stuff that we've played huge involvements over the years. Our public health, so not too long ago, there was actually a hepatitis outbreak in the homeless community. So getting out there, getting people vaccinated, trying to help with that piece. I mean, like I said, we just, we have quite a few departments that do have some pretty big roles. Fremont County just recently applied for a grant to look at our rules and regulations to see if there's any barriers that we have in place that are preventing housing, because we all know that it's tough right now for anybody to find housing, let alone those that, you know, are struggling to have financial resources. I know, I live in Penrose and the number of people that are living in a camper or living in a tent or on somebody's property, I mean, it's huge. And those individuals, I don't know what their specific situation is, but I know if I was trying to find a house right now in Fremont County, it'd be a challenge. And so we're looking at a regulation, seeing if we have barriers in place, how we can promote that. We were talking to the commissioners about when the last apartment complex went in around here. I mean, there's just so many different factors, but I think just to try to specifically answer some of your questions, we do have a lot of things that our departments are working on to try to maybe not completely directly based on this conversation, but to try to help with this.
Thank you. And thank you for coming to the table so we can have a unified picture and hopefully develop a unified plan. We'd like to again invite on June 2nd, if you wish, workshop on homeless solutions and deeper dive into the SOS ordinance in itself as we, if there aren't any other comments to add, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one other request before the June 2nd meeting. I think there have been a couple of things that have been mentioned in terms of lessons learned from the pilot that aren't necessarily reflected in the ordinance as it stands. There aren't any mentions of fencing or in terms of like limiting the number of individuals who are allowed to stay there, things like that. And I think it might be helpful if we do have those lessons learned captured, to go ahead and include those, maybe as track changes in the draft ordinance prior to June 2nd so that we're really able to focus on, on what, what the current draft would look like once all of those lessons, lessons learned are incorporated.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, because in our first conversation, we're like, we want to see all of these things in this ordinance and like, well, this should be done administratively, but it probably needs to have a lot more teeth and be codified. So thank you for that. Well, direct counsel, or you're representing Ryan, so we'll direct Ryan, Ryan's not here, but you're his representation chief. I know you're looking around, but we will all get to him. You're sitting in Ryan's seat.
Okay, Madam Mayor, is there something you need me to offer?
No, it's good, I'm sorry.
Caught me off guard there.
But Amy, maybe let's make sure we reach out to Ryan and make sure we have those things on there. As we close now, I do want to just say that there is, I mean, it is a national problem. Almost every single community is just overrun with homeless problems. We are not unique. I am grateful to be together with us and together and to find solutions and is super grateful for Built for Zero, who in the last, since 2019, there has been major changes that have been happening. And just really quick, you just went to another Built for Zero conference and there is a message of hope for our community and do you mind just letting us know some of the things that you've learned or from other communities?
Sure. I guess I would just share that it's, it's nice to hear, or not nice to hear, but the problems that we just talked about here, all communities across the United States are, are seeing the same thing that they, they believe that people are coming into their communities, there's rumors of people's being bussed in and things like that. So that is not an unusual conversation. It happens, or is happening a lot, or that, that belief is happening a lot across the United States. But I would say that there are, there were two communities and there maybe were more, but there were two that I remember. One was Albany, Texas, and the other one was Rockvale, Illinois. Both of them, it's my understanding, were on the smaller-sized communities. Both of them have ended veteran homelessness and chronic homelessness and working towards ending all homelessness and I think they set a goal of 2026 or 2027. So it, it is not easy. There are no easy solutions and it's not one solution, it's a lot of different solutions. And so I believe it is possible for Fremont County to end homelessness, but it's not just going to take just DHS and Lows and Fishes and Solvista Health, it's going to take the whole community. And I'm looking forward to our conversation next Thursday, I'm looking forward to coming out of that with solutions to help end this problem in our community. I think that's what we want, we want our community not to have any homelessness, so, but it is possible, other communities have done it and we are better than them and so we can do it too. So that's all I would say.
Thank you. All right, thanks for everyone in your attendance, we sure appreciate your time. This meeting is adjourned.